We're live, then I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the Simsbury Planning Commission regularly scheduled meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 28, 2020. If we could all rise and please prepare to recite the pledge of allegiance. Okay. Where is my screen? Hold on, folks. I'll share a screen. There's the old American flag. Here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Right. Thank you. Oh, switch over to our roll call. Alrighty, Holly Bem.
Here.
Very good. David Bloomey. Dave, have you snuck in? Not as of yet. Aaron Smith.
Here.
Craig McCormack.
Here.
Alan Needham.
Here.
William Rice is here. Rich Cortez.
Here.
Hello, Rich. Julie Eaton.
Yeah.
Sean Glenn. No response, so we'll say that's absent for the time being. Okay, so we have one, one, one absent spot on the full, on the full committee member slate, so let's see here. Uh, two, 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 two. It looks like the last person be seated was Rich. So Julie, I'll ask that you be promoted to a full member for tonight's meeting.
Great.
And that completes our commission. Very good. Okay. Now we have approval of the minutes. Now the agenda, the agenda says minutes of the Tuesday, June 22, 2020, regular meetings. Uh, I believe the minutes we need to address are for July 14.
Yeah, right.
So do we need to amend the agenda?
You should amend the agenda to say that you're voting on the 14th.
Okay, so I make a motion that we amend the agenda to to show that we are discussing and hopefully approving the minutes of the July 14, 2020 regular meeting.
Second.
That was, that was you, Craig?
It was, yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the amendment to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions, please say I abstain. Motion carries unanimously, six to zero. Okay. So now let's turn our attention to the minutes of the July 14, 2020, regular meeting. Mr. Secretary, could you please lead us through that?
Okay, regarding the minutes of July 14, 2020, any additions, corrections on page one? Hey, page two, I got some stuff. Is that anybody else?
Go ahead.
Okay, line 60, I'm having trouble making sense the way it was written. Now, it's entirely possible it's actually the way I talked too, but on line 66, it starts with home is affordable to asking if it is, is 830G. I think I changed that home is affordable um, according to eight dash 33, eight eight dash 30G. I mean, that, that was my intention. Okay?
Just reading it. So you wanna change, you wanna add according between affordable and two?
Yep. And then I would drop the asking.
And, okay. Eliminate asking. Yeah, I have no objection to that.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Line 68. It reads devoted to household earnings. I don't think it's earnings, it's expenses, the 30%. Isn't that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Homeowners' expenses.
Then line 70 reads affordable to, which is eight dash 30G. Affordable to according, in accordance with eight dash 30G. Instead of two.
Yep.
I think that's it for that.
Anyone else up to line 101?
Nothing yet.
Okay, next page, starting with line 102.
So on line 128, on the surface appears to be affordable based upon the 30% of utilities and mortgage instead of or. That's all I have on that page.
Okay, so minutes. Okay, starting with line 152, top of the page.
197. Um, further explained that this program would then require that unit would transition. Not to transition, right, would to
Just transition.
Transition.
Makes more sense.
Okay. Line, that was line 197, eliminating the word two. I see you there, Dave.
I'm present but late, sorry.
Well, we'll address that when we're done with this action item.
I'm moving into light.
Yep.
Um, starting with line 202, top of the next page, I had something on line
Oh, I had, I'm sorry, Alan, back on, I'm sorry, back on 199. Um, it should, improve should be improving. So along with improving their property, not along with improve. Sorry.
No problem. All right, next page, starting with line 202. I've got something on 210 unless somebody's got something earlier.
Nope.
210, I think I'd substitute the word two for four, first word in the line. Not awareness for the need, but awareness to the need. And then line 214. Reported interest in having the commission instead of saying add to amend some of the goals. I think I'd just strike the words add to.
Yep.
Anything else that page? Oh my gosh, there's an
219.
Oh, there's already some, yeah.
I think investigation should be investigate, maybe?
Yeah.
Investigate, right? Yeah. Cause it's, yeah, so that should read that way.
Yep.
Quite true.
And then 244. Um, there's just a typo, living, and that should be in the home.
Yep.
I do that all the time when I type, so.
Okay, last page, starting with line 252.
Nothing for me.
I believe that's it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the July 14, 2020 Planning Commission meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
Aaron seconds. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the amended minutes, please say aye.
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 Dave, you're not seated, sorry. Oh, did they?
Withdrawn.
Uh, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, carry six to zero. Motion is approved. Very good. Okay, so let me just do this. Uh, so Dave, we did seat Julie.
Hey, that's fine.
So I'm gonna, I'll just show you as uh, present but not seated.
Stand the whole time.
Yeah, the whole time. Just bear with me a second as I update my
Okay. It's tough to be on permanent vacation and attend meetings, you know.
All right. That fixes up my my records. Okay, on to discussion. Item number one. Um, Honor Lawler sent me a request last week to have the commission consider issuing a letter of support for the towns and TPL's application to the State Department of Environment and Energy deep, whatever that is.
Energy, environmental protection.
Protection, yeah, energy and environmental protection. Open space and watershed land acquisition grant program. Um, she had sent me a, a sample, not even a sample, but a letter that the uh, I think the inland wetlands conservation commission uh, had, had written as a go by, and she also was kind enough to uh, prepare a draft for the commission. Mike, you want to bring that up, or you want me to share? Actually, I don't even know if I have it open right now.
I, I could Dropbox.
It's in the Dropbox.
All right, let me open it up.
It's the, the attachment in your, in your general folder is request PDF.
Yeah. Request dot PDF, okay, I'll just download that.
Bill, do you want me to share that?
No, I'm gonna do it right now.
Okay.
Oh, are you doing it, or are we just looking it up on our own?
Well, you can do that too, but I'll share.
Okay.
All right, I'll make that a little bit bigger. Okay, so this is addressed to Commissioner Katie Dykes, Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Services. I don't know if that's right.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right.
That's Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection.
Yes, that's what I mean.
Oh, oh, yes.
Yeah, the P.
This is Dease, not G.
He created a whole new department.
Yeah. So, uh, okay, this is a, a PDF, I don't, I can't edit it on the fly here. Uh, but it goes on to say that, you know, at our last meeting, uh, we voted unanimously to return a positive referral to the Board of Selectment for the acquisition of the Meadowwood property. Uh, the town's plan of conservation and development calls to protect natural resources and water quality. Uh, create a meaningful open space system and preserve the character of the community. Apparently, character is a, not a good word anymore. This property meets all of these criteria, protecting aquifer recharge areas, strategically linking Masako State Forest and McLean Game Refuge, and preserving an iconic landscape that holds special historic significance in Simsbury and the state's history. The preservation outcome also calls for agricultural use on parts of the property along with the preservation of historic tobacco barns. These barns and fields are specifically noted in the list of current resources that contribute to the character of the town. This property has the opportunity to bring a host of economic opportunities to the town of Simsbury. The Trust for Public Land has presented to the town on the numerous economic benefits that open space preservation brings to communities, including enhancing localized property values, bolstering tourism and local business activity, providing natural goods and services, supporting farming and forest industry, and increasing public health. This project will provide a meaningful recreational resource and cultural site to our community, and so we ask you to act favorably on this application to the Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Program. Sincerely, William Rice, Chair on behalf of the planning, on, on behalf of the commission. I couldn't have written it better myself.
I thought you did.
We, do you, Bill, you had some question about preserve the character of the community, you didn't?
Well, uh, that, that's kind of a, kind of an offhand remark. One of the other attachments in Dropbox was this CCM report uh, about desegregate CT. And in there, one of their recommendations is to eliminate the word character from land use regulations. Alan pointed that out to me earlier, or late last week or something. I don't have an issue with it in this context.
No.
Yeah, I don't either.
So Mike, how do you want to do this? You want me to, um, you want me to, to type it up and send it to you?
Yeah, they, he, she needs it by Friday.
Yeah, right, so.
If you want to I guess You want me to send you the, send you the town letterhead, or how do you want to, either way, it doesn't matter.
No, let me, uh, I'll just put it on a word, on a, you know, blank word document, send it to you, and then you can, if you would, put it on town letterhead.
Yep.
Okay.
Don't forget to put services as protection.
Yeah, I'm gonna change the date as well.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any comments to, to the letter?
Can I just point something out? And I'm sure people know this. It's interesting she put in Masako because Commissioner Dykes was at Masako last month. Because there were, um, if you want to call them protests, but there were a group of people there. Yeah, really protesting the clearing and the logging of Masako State Forest. So if you've gone by Masako, you can see that they've already started logging. There's well over 1,200 logs just lying there that they said were gonna be taken out. So she's well aware of Masako. But I, I just don't, um, you know, we're in the middle, this group of concerned citizens and its state, it's not town property, but I, you know, I love the letter, I'm just, I just wanted people to be aware that there is a big brouhaha over Masako for what I believe is good reason, but, um, you know, I just want to point that out because she mentioned it. So I, I just don't know if she's aware of all the things and that Commissioner Dykes was actually at Masako uh, a Friday morning, I believe it was the end of June, uh, end of June.
Okay.
Um, still, her, her point is this acquisition would link these two properties, which strategic for while the movement of wildlife and, and preserve a lot of species, so.
Which they've destroyed by but that's
How, how would it link Masako State Forest to McCain, McLean game refuge?
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, there's a lot of land
There's a lot of land in between, that's true.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought these two were bordering. I did not realize that. I, I, my mistake, my mistake.
I don't think so. That's a good point, Bill. I don't think it does.
I never would have wrote that.
What was that?
I never would have wrote that.
Okay, I, I thought on the maps, and now I'll have to go look, on the maps we saw presentation, uh, I thought there was another property that would be linked to McLean, maybe I don't
It's a Meadow. Meadow.
Great.
That, that property links, Masako links with Town Forest.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what she means, but it doesn't link with, I mean, it, cause it goes, you know, Onion Mountain, Masako, Town Forest, so you could say that it links
To other forests, you know, how about that, other preserved areas.
I'm sorry, I'll have to go Yeah, it, it's like, wasn't that, um, yeah, um,
Meadow View.
Yeah, but many of you, yeah, I think it is part of that, hold up.
Yeah, Meadow View definitely butts up because I
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, she's talking about Great Pond.
Definitely, yeah.
Not Great Pond.
That's great. Well, maybe we should mention that instead, you know, because that is, I, you know, I've I only know of this because I've sat through enough Simsbury Land Trust um, meetings to creating this green beltway for, um,
Yeah, okay, so, um.
Well, or Bill, can you take that out? Why not just take out that strategically link, just take out that piece?
I did on the side of linking McLean with the other, um, major, um, open space.
Yeah, but she's talking about Meadow, what she's talking about. I, I think it should, I mean, Masako and McLean don't, I don't, it's kind of a disconnect if she said
They're not that far apart, though.
Well, if she said it strategically links Meadowwood and McLean. Cause that's what it does.
I can't find the presentation in the Dropbox. I was trying to look to see.
I would make it accurate and leave it in.
I don't know why, uh, we're not seeing McLean here.
It was, it was on the original presentation. Holly's right.
But I, I guess it's not in the Dropbox anymore.
Wow.
Find it.
All right, I don't, I don't think it's all that far off from being accurate. I was under the, you know, I mistakenly thought that Masako State Forest was off of, uh, West Mountain Road.
It is.
No, uh.
That's where they're logging now.
Isn't it across from Onion Mountain?
Yeah, it's, it's off of West Mountain Road.
Guys, it's Great Pond.
Oh.
He's right.
So Masako should be Great Pond?
Well, it's, uh, Masako State Forest, Great Pond.
That's where it
Oh, you know what? But it's not, but, well. They've linked it, the state has linked that in their logging protocol, but yeah, I
The letter doesn't say anything about logging.
No, I'm just saying Masako, Masako does not butt up to McLean Refuge.
It's, yeah, it's kind of close. It's over
I see it's Great Pond slash Masako.
Yeah, so it's Great Pond. Great Pond does.
Right, but it was written on, on the map, I'm looking on Google Maps, it says Great Pond slash Masako State Forest.
Right. Do you, do you guys see my screen?
No.
No.
I am
See the letter.
So just add Great Pond slash Masako. You could just add the Great Pond.
Okay, let me confirm. Do you guys see what I'm sharing?
No.
Sharing the letter, Bill.
Yeah, oh, it's only the letter? Okay.
Yes.
Sorry, sorry. I'm gonna stop sharing and try to share again. I want to share everything. All right, so, okay, anyway, I'll just bring up the map. Yeah, so it's both ways, again, Masako State Forest dash Great Pond and Great Pond slash Masako State Forest. Yeah, I'll add in Great Pond one of those ways.
Yep.
Okay.
Cause Great Pond does it, yeah.
Okay, you guys still see Google Maps, right?
Yeah.
All right, new share. Okay, back to the letter. There we go. Add Great Pond to Masako.
Is Masako spelled right? Is two S's or one?
Yeah, I checked, uh,
Two S's according to Google.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so you guys see the letter now, I hope, right?
Yeah.
So with making that change, adding, uh, Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and changing the date, I make a motion that the that the commission, uh, grant the chairman the authority to, uh, author the letter and submit it to, to town staff for, uh, application of town letterhead and subsequent forwarding to uh, Commissioner Katie Dykes and Honor Lawler.
Second.
Okay. Second, Craig. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Yeah, motion carries unanimously, six, zero. Thank you, very good. Uh, okay, um, the next item on the agenda is the Affordable Housing Plan. But I would like to make a motion that we take up item five prior to item 4.2.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Any discussion? All in favor of, uh, adjusting the, uh, schedule of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Very good. Okay, so referral uh, from Board of Educat, uh, Board, I'm sorry, Board of Selectment for the road acceptance of Murphy's Turn. All right, I do have that open. Here we go, share. I hope you all can see it.
Oh, what just happened?
Did I, oh, resume share.
Ah, there it is.
Okay. So Mike, uh, can you, can you just, uh, kind of walk us through this, please?
Yeah, so we're at the final stages of the, the construction project, it was 46 Hildecrest, also known as Murphy's Turn. It's a five lot, uh, re-subdivision that was approved by the commission back in 2013. Three out of the five homes had been constructed at this time. Um, the developer has completed all the public improvements. The town's attorney has reviewed the deed and easement language for the utilities and roadway and said that it's, it's acceptable for, uh, roadway acceptance. We had some corrective actions that had to be completed out there, but he has, he has finished that work. Um, it's in staff's opinion, it's ready to be accepted as a public road. Um, that, that means for the, the people living on it, now they can get mail at their house. Um, the road will be plowed this winter, et cetera. That's all I got on this right now.
So Mike, is the road complete?
That's correct.
Okay, it's, it's all the paving Okay, it's, it's, all the paving's done.
We had. We had to do some corrective actions out there, that's, this probably should have been before you last fall, however. Um, when they paved, they paved at the end of the season and it was not to Jeff Shay's satisfaction. So we actually had to revisit that this spring, so that's why it took so long to get before you.
Okay. Any discussion, commissioners?
Thank you, Jeff.
Sounds like Mike's happy with it, so if Mike's happy with it, sounds good to me.
All right, if someone could make. Uh, what was that, Holly?
I said, I, I think I agree that a lot of us might feel that way, too.
Okay, someone care to make a motion?
I move that we, uh, accept, uh, the road at Murphy's Turn.
Is it accept a positive?
Send a positive referral for the roadway acceptance.
Yeah.
Thanks, Alan.
Yep.
Okay, is there a second? That was Julie.
Yeah, it's fine, or Alan, that's all right.
Okay, so, uh, any discussion on the, uh, motion to send a positive referral to the Board of Selectmen regarding. Acceptance of the Murphy's Turn roadway. Here in, oh, okay, uh, was that a comment?
Yeah, just me saying, I think we're good.
Okay, good, uh, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes unanimously six to zero, thank you very much, commissioners. Okay, now we'll go back to item four point two, the Affordable Housing Plan. I don't know if, uh, if commissioners, uh, saw it or not, but I made some handwritten comments and it had. Sent those into Mike and he posted it to, uh, to the Dropbox. Uh, and Mike, I think that, uh, your, your current version. Exists in the box folder under, uh, Affordable Housing, right?
Correct.
Not the one that's in the root directory.
Make sure, oh, we get in.
So there's two of them in there at the moment.
So, the. Affordable Housing Plan that is, was uploaded on July tenth, that is the, that was the draft that was. Shared with the commission at the last meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Then, let me make sure I have the right one. Nope, that's not it. Think you're.
Yeah, under the Affordable Housing folder, I believe is the updated one.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, it's, you know what, the, if. The one that's in the Affordable Housing, uh, folder, that was the, was uploaded back in, uh, April, that's. That actually, it's, it's not the complete plan, the one that's in the main folder is the complete plan. I'll move it into the Affordable Housing folder right now.
Okay, and then you can delete the one that's in Affordable Housing or give them, um, like, uh, some type of, uh, discerning.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll do that right now, I'm sorry for the confusion.
Yeah, okay.
I think that the, the, the one with Bill's comments in the Affordable Housing folder is, is what you wanted to talk about, right?
Yeah.
So it's here, it's in the Affordable Housing folder.
Yeah, my markup, yeah, so I, I mistakenly thought you may have taken some of my comments, Mike, and put them into the, uh. Affordable Housing Plan dot doc X in that.
No.
Folder, okay, so you have not made any changes.
No, I've not made any changes, I've, in fairness to the commission, I thought that we would discuss and see if anyone else has some, uh, comments they'd like to make, too.
Okay, good, um, so before we, before we get into that, um, I just want to share. With, with the commissioners that, uh, I did receive an email from, uh, Eric Wellman. And, um. He was, uh, very appreciative of the efforts that the commission has, uh, undertaken. But wanted to ensure that we, um, seek. Uh, input from the citizens of Simsbury. And, uh, he suggested some form of public, uh, forum, whether it be a public hearing or informational session. Uh, or something like that, uh, you know, advertise it and, uh, and make sure people, um. Are aware and have the opportunity to participate, uh, I, I think that's a great idea, uh, you know.
Agreed.
Yeah, we, we, I don't think.
Yeah.
And should be doing this unilaterally, um, I was gonna suggest that after we got through with our first cut at the first draft. Um, so what, what do commissioners think about, uh, you know, holding a, a public session?
Totally agree, I think it's a great idea, yep.
Phil, I think rather than put out a first draft and look for comments. I prefer just say it's still a work in progress, which it is, and have a public listening session. Where we don't distribute our first draft, it makes it look like we kind of decided what we're gonna do before we listen to you.
Okay.
So I think we should have a public listening session, you can call it a public hearing if you like. At which time the public can say whatever they want about affordable housing, I would suggest that it be. Limited to a listening session, not a debate with presenters, not expl- explaining things to presenters. Just listen to what people want to say about affordable housing, I. I think we're gonna find out that what they're talking about in terms of affordable doesn't have much to do with the definition we've been using from eight thirty G, but. But I don't want to assume that, so that, that would be my choice, that we have a public listening session. No Q's and A's, just listen, listen to what people have to say and then look at our draft. And see if we want to modify.
Are you saying, Alan, a listening session where people can make comments or a listening session?
Yeah, we're listening to them.
Oh, okay.
No, no, not listening to us, no, 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 we, we. Go ahead.
No, that makes sense, you definitely want to get input before you formalize, but just from my point of view. Last week and the past two weeks, this commission needed a lot of education on what it meant, how to define it. So I think you have to start it off with some education, so that you're not just getting, you know, rampant input from people. So that would be a suggestion.
Uh, I agree with Julie, we, we've debated it a lot and, you know, we've all taken. A sworn oath to uphold the state statutes and that's what we're doing, I mean, it's. A big hunk of how we define it and, uh, that's, it's defined for us and we've. Given our sworn oath to uphold that, so I think, as Julie pointed, we should hear with them what the background is.
I. I think that there's a lot of interest in this subject over the last two or three months.
Agree.
A, a lot of people are posting and talking and forming groups. I think it's going to be difficult to educate the public until we hear what they have to say. Um, I would do it the other way around, I would just let people, I don't want to say then, but I would like them to just give their point of view. Because I'm afraid we're gonna get stuck in the weeds. If we start saying, look, affordable to this commission is limited to the state definition in eight thirty G. That's going to be volatile right out of the gate.
Yeah.
Because that isn't what they're talking about, so.
We've had our own issues with it.
Well, that, that's right, we do, you know?
Yeah.
It's, there's two notions of affordable floating around out there. Um, I think what a lot of people are talking about in the community, and I don't speak for them, is that what they're thinking of is affordable, doesn't have anything to do with eight dash thirty G.
Right.
Okay, so I, my preference would be rather than. I'm, I'm going to say something I don't mean, okay, rather than bend them to our will, like, no, no, this is what it means. I think I'd rather just have an open session, just listen, and once we're done with that, see if we can write. Um, our own affordable document, maybe with some other language, that there's other ways to look at affordability.
Hey, Alan, I, I would, I, I, when you first started expressing that idea, I was thinking, I don't really like that, but. Because we have to, we have to do what we need to do, um, with regards to, you know, with the regulation in mind. So I, so I was thinking that in order to, you know, to, to, to frame the conversation that we'll be hearing and involved with, with the public. To be able to explain upfront, you know, eight thirty, you know, the, 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 the regulation. And, and, and how that applies to what it is that we're trying to do would be beneficial. But I think to your point, though, it probably would be good to give people the opportunity to kind of express their opinions regardless.
See, what I'm, I, I'm with that, Craig, but. The thing I'm concerned about is if we pigeonhole people and the only thing we're willing to discuss is the state statute's definition of affordable housing. Then you're telling them. You're done, okay, and I just don't think that that's a great idea, so we could always listen. And write up our best effort for affordable statute, okay, maybe make a comment about other points of view, maybe not. But if, um, I just. I, I kind of concerned about how that information session is gonna go if we're telling people. You can't talk about what you came here to talk about, that's what I'm concerned about.
So maybe I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pose a question to Mike Liddon. Now, there, there is a requirement for towns to create an, an affordable housing plan, correct?
That's correct.
And is it directly tied to eight dash thirty G?
It's eight, eight thirty, it's eight thirty J is the enabling statute that requires. The establishment of affordable, affordable housing plan once every five years, which is directly connected to eight thirty J.
So we can't. Can it have, can it have other components to it?
You can have other components, but your primary focus has to be the goals and objectives as outlined in eight thirty J. So unfortunately, that, that, that arbitrary number of ten percent of your housing stock becoming deemed affordable. Is one of the goals you need to, you need to reach eventually.
It has to comply with those metrics.
Yep, and then, so this plan is supposed to be a roadmap of how do we get to it?
And Alan, we'd be doing a disservice if we did not tell our, 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 our citizens that, this, this is the purpose of this.
Then if we're going to have the session then, then we'd better preface it with some language that says. That, that this is required by such and such a statute and, and the affordable housing plan has to be limited to. Living within that statute.
Well, I don't know about limited, must include.
Which is kind of what we started with, isn't it, Julie?
Yeah, I mean, that's my quote, that's exactly what.
Full circle. But yeah, I think that whether their, their voice is gonna really matter is in the recommendations for how we address it. Instead of that being just from the commission, I think that's where the power in, from the public voice can be heard. And tell them we want to hear from them and how they think we can creatively tackle this solution.
But they also need to understand what, what the ground rules are that we're operating within, right?
Right, right, right.
Well, then, then, in whatever we do to post, then we'd better explain what we're talking about.
Yeah.
The discussion is limited to, not, well, we wouldn't put it this way, not by our choice, but because that's what the statute does, they.
Yeah.
Require a, a discussion of eight dash thirty G through eight dash thirty J.
Yeah, I would, I would say, you know, the, the, the objective is to meet or exceed the ten percent. Uh, affordable housing, uh, and one way to do that is through eight dash thirty G, but there are other ways to do it as well. And that, those are the ideas that I want to hear, uh, and also, you know, what, what are people's thoughts? Regarding, um. You know, uh. The, the, uh, I don't know how to put it, but the, the mechanism of eight dash thirty G, not that they can change it. But, you know, um, is cluster housing preferred, is, you know, is it, uh, uh. Multi-family or, or whatever. Without even knowing if that's. Uh, acceptable in, in the statute.
Now, there will be people very disappointed in our approach, and you're gonna hear about that, okay?
We've been disappointed, that we've been stuck with the, the statutes that we've been stuck with.
It, it would be extraordinary difficult to write something. That would make everybody in town happy, impossible, I would say impossible.
Yeah. So are we, okay, I, I think I hear that we're in agreement that a public listening session is, uh, in order.
By something carefully written about what this statute is, because what you got from Eric Wellman, I don't think. It implies that.
Yeah, I think he, he, he kind of intimates a much broader spectrum.
Broader scope, and people will be looking for that, so.
I think.
Good job trying to preface this so that this would be a good document once we've reviewed it, that. Precisely that's what has been written to try to explain, I think Mike's been working really hard on trying to explain what. What the, uh, issues are.
Well, you, the listening session should be preceded, I think, with something written you could even hand out, but certainly something verbal. That we are limited to what the statute calls for, just say that upfront, and if somebody goes to field the map, we listen to it.
Um, I think, I, I, I actually did speak to Eric, um, about this, and I think his concern is more just to make sure that. Boards and commissions and people in town have some kind of say, so I, I don't know how broad. But I, I, I think a listening session would suffice, do you know what I mean, I, I think he just wanted to be sure that people. Um, like himself and other board members, you know, like aging and disabilities, for instance, or, um, you know, had. Some input i- in some way, and so I think if we did the listening session, um, you know, we should send that out to all the commissions and boards. Um, that were doing this listening session, so that if people are interested, they can hop on.
I don't know, Erin, if it suffices, but the process began with input from aging and disabilities.
And I mentioned that, Alan, I actually did, I said that.
Done that, but.
Well, again, I did mention that to him, I said before COVID and we were not having, uh, before we couldn't have in-person meetings, they actually. Uh, came, um, and, and, uh, and we, so we already had that discussion, so this isn't something. This has been going on for months and months, so I, I think he was happy to hear that, you know, he didn't know. So I did, I did actually explain that, that, that we already have, but again, they, they have not seen a product. And so if they wanted to weigh in on what our product is, or what they could, or whatever we're gonna decide to do, but.
Okay, so I'm formulating a plan, uh, Lee, run it by you. Um, I think it, it, it wouldn't do anyone, uh, uh, much service. To hold a information or a listening session, uh, until sometime in September. Okay, too many, too many vacations and things like that, even though people may not be going away. Um, so how about if we target, uh, like late September for some type of session? Okay? Any. There?
Bill, you, you have, uh, two meetings in September, one is in, uh, September eighth, that obviously that's too early. So you're probably leaning on September twenty-second at your, at your second meeting.
Yeah.
And the public learns about this in the usual way, you post it on the town website?
So we post on the town website, uh, one other thing, we'll go one step further and I'll share it with Eric Wellman and Maria to. So that, and there are general reports they give to the Board of Selectmen, that that goes out toward the, a different population.
Um, we should, if we're going to do that, we should say what we're going to talk about, we're not gonna talk about the broader sense of affordable. We're gonna talk about the legislatively designed definition of affordable.
So maybe it's a, a memorandum that's kind of similar to the, the forward that's in the, the Affordable Housing Document. And kind of cite, cite the statute, you know, the reason why we're doing this, you know, that we're required to do this as a community. So then, and then, I, I don't know, as, in my opinion, I'm just, this, I'm just throwing this on the table, is that. I think to have a productive conversation, I agree with some of the commissioners' conversation, comments on, you know, kind of structuring it and saying, well, we're here because of statute and we're here because of this particular statute, but also I would like to have a draft document where we can maybe have them focus on the comments. So it's not just a shotgun across the every, you know, every which direction on affordable housing.
Then make it clear it's not a finished document.
Yeah.
Well, that's, I would say that we're, this is a draft and we're looking for input on the draft. And they could say, you know, get to Bill's comment earlier, you know, the goal is to meet the, the, the ten percent objective or exceed it. Maybe there's some sort of action that comes up out of the session that goes, you know what, that's fantastic. That's going to be an, an action we're going to add to this and this may be a real action that we actually see results.
I think we should use language that's not just that we're doing this because we're required to. I think because we want to.
Okay.
And shouldn't, will you be putting that in this review that we're going over right now, Alan?
Well, I think
At the end of the day, this document that we're reviewing is explaining.
Position. I assume we'll have something written in advance of the twenty-eight, twenty-second meeting. I'm assuming we'll give people time to write a short paragraph on that. Mike had an idea of what it should be.
Mike's already put quite a bit of work into it.
Yeah.
Trying to do just that.
All right, this is what I want to do. I know I promised last, last meeting that we would go through this. That was prior to the correspondence from Eric Wellman. What I'd, what I'd like to do is if you haven't taken a look at my, my markups, please do so. And our next meeting is on the twenty-fifth of August. And at that meeting is when I'd like to have everyone's comments, whether you agree with mine, disagree, have your own. Mike, maybe we just make that whole meeting just the review of this unless there's applications, of course, or, you know, anything else, but the, the primary focus of the eight twenty-five meeting will be to let's say, settle on a commissioner-approved draft of the plan.
So we're not commissioners of the other, or the chairs of the other commissions, just so that we can say we sent it out across the board?
Yeah, I, I'll actually, yeah, we, we can share it with Asian Disability Spirit, etc. I mean, that's something the commission, this commission, we could, as Bill kind of indicated at your twenty, the August twenty-fifth meeting, you know, settle on a draft and then we'll send those drafts out. We can identify which commissions we want to include in that distribution and, and that way they get the invite.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So I apologize, commissioners, for kind of, you know, putting this off again, but I, I think it'll be better overall.
Well, fine.
The situation's a little different.
Just a bit, yeah. Okay, then, so yeah, Mike, make that the primary agenda item of that, was it August twenty-fifth? Yeah, August twenty-fifth.
Yep. And then in the meantime, if anyone else has comments about the draft document, just email them to me and then I'll keep updating to the Dropbox so everyone's comments are there, so we can share it as a commission amongst each other rather than responding to the, the commission in the entire, I just don't want any FOI issues.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, Mike, any, any correspondence, anything else we need to know about?
Nothing new.
Nothing new, quiet, huh? Okay, so folks, yeah, our, our next meeting is a month from now. So remember, historically, August was the, a month with no meetings, but to better serve our customers for the better, lack of any better term, we decided to have a meeting in August. I think it's going to work out good. If there is no, you know, regular business that we need to attend to, we can concentrate on this plan.
Good.
Okay, commissioners, any other questions or comments?
Remove to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
That was Erin, okay. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, any abstentions?